All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call a meeting to order. Yes, now it is. Okay, the first item, we have no public here in schedule tonight. First item is the review and approval of our April 10th and May 8th Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Members all had a chance to look at it? Were there any significant revisions received, Karen?
No.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the April 10th and May 8th minutes as presented by the Secretary.
Second.
All right, discussing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So move. Next item is the Site Plan Review Amendment to the Loop Road LLC Golden Fire.
Good evening. Jesse Plumlee with Plumlee Engineering, here representing the property owner. We are proposing an amendment to the approved site plan to include the addition of a driveway for access on the Loop Road. During construction of the new building, it was determined that access to the new building for the larger vehicles that are being serviced there is difficult through the existing parking lot. So they're asking for a driveway on the south end so that those trucks can get through. The plan, as presented, incorporates setbacks and lot coverages for the property. The addition of the driveway brings the lot coverage from the previously proposed 41,849 square feet to 55,995 square feet, which is below the maximum allowed coverage of about 76,000. The additional of the driveway will allow for larger trucks to access the new building directly rather than navigating through the existing parking. The onsite stormwater management system has been expanded to account for the new driveway, and the updated SWP was sent to Al for review. And a driveway permit will be required from the town, and that has been applied for. Be happy to take any questions.
Do we allow two curb cuts per single person?
We do, and it is allowed in the industrial park. There's other facilities, obviously, that have that, be Anheuser-Busch, McLean, Specialized Packaging, Agro-Na.
Are you good with the coverage, Al?
I am. I think actually, from a public safety standpoint, because there are, you know, it's a therapy or there's a...
It was, yeah.
Yeah, there's like a medical office in the front, running fire trucks through there. Probably isn't the best idea in combination with the office space, so having a dedicated driveway makes sense.
We never did a traffic analysis, but we also thought separating the larger slower vehicles from the curve to the north was better. Intuitively, it sounds right, but there was no traffic study to show that.
There's more than adequate site distance either way with the current speed living on the road. It's a non-issue, really.
There's no hammerhead or anything. Do these trucks, can they turn around?
Yeah, this is...
They can?
Yeah, this is a fairly wide area for them.
I'd like to read the engineer's letter into the record. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the revised site plans for the above referenced project prepared by Plumlee Engineering dated July 2024, with a final revision date of May 25. A SWP revision form has been provided. I have no further engineering related comments at this time. I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the revised site plan at this time. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I assume there'll be some signage, truck entrance versus passenger vehicle entrance?
We can certainly incorporate that, yeah.
That will need to be, any additional signs will need to be approved by ESDC, so we'll have to add contingency into the resolution that, you know, truck entrance sign shall be added. Approval from ESDC will be required. I mean, I'm assuming this is pretty low volume?
Yeah, and it's their own trucks, for the most part.
Yeah, so this is where they're going to rig their trucks before they do delivery, right?
Right, exactly. So it's going to be a lot of people who are more familiar with it. And it is designed to be able to loop through, so if a car did pull in here, they could get into the parking without an issue. That's why signage wasn't initially brought up.
Who was the second one? We need to have truck signage and approval by?
Empire State Development Corporation.
They still have say.
Yeah, yes, they still have a say in the industrial park.
Yep.
But that's benign. Alls you got to do is send them...
Yeah, they've been good.
Yeah, alls you got to do is send them the cut sheet and the sign and make sure that it's brown and it'll be fine.
Yep, brown boy letter.
Yes.
Okay.
Just like the street signs, right, Doug?
Yeah.
All right, I'll read the findings. Separate environmental impact study is not required as one has already been provided. There's a letter on file from Empire State Development dated October 26, 2023 that did not require modification per an email from Adrian Berdick, Project Manager, Radisson Development, dated May 28, 25. Verbal approval regarding the proposed driveway location was received from John Butler, Highway Superintendent, June 12, 2025. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinance. This action did not require referral to One O'Dogger County Planning Board for their review and recommendation. This action will cause no adverse effects on public health, safety, and welfare in the neighborhood or district. Resolved that having reviewed the amended site plan dated July 2024 and revised May 25, prepared by Plumlee Engineering, associated with the application of 8269-8289 Loop Road, 8269 Loop Road, Baldwinsville, New York, and part of the Radisson PUD to allow a second ingress egress to the site to allow a better flow of traffic. This site plan is hereby approved with the following conditions. Review and approval by Al Jager, Town Engineer.
I've provided a letter, now that can be struck.
Yep. Well, we'll just check them off and we'll leave the here in this statement. Final review and approval by John Butler, Highway Superintendent, for access. We have his approval. All fees associated with this application, including expert fees, be paid prior to the code enforcement officer's final walkthrough and the placement of truck entrance and exit signage and approval by the Empire State Development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Jesse, those will need highway work permits or building permits and signs as well, local.
All right, I'll write that on the bottom, Karen. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Timberbank. Well, the one that's on is Minor Subdivision, Timberbanks LLC.
That's the one that's being tabled, I think. This is the next one, but Ben's got something to say.
All right, so our understanding is that that proposed minor subdivision is not going to occur. It's going to be handled by Division of Land?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take no action on that. So the next item is Major Subdivision Amendment for Timberbanks Phase 4, Section 10, Forest Ridge Lane, proposed Shagmark Drive.
So I've got...
And I'm under the understanding you're looking for final plat approval?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've got half size of the new that I'll hand out in the old, because it can be a lot easier to look at these than me flipping back and forth a bunch of times. So what I just handed you is the proposed layout, and this is the approved, so you can look at them side by side. But a very minor change, so what we asked to table is the main reason, well, pretty much the only reason for this change. So as you will see on the old plan, there has always been contemplation of a stub road towards Jerry Hole's property with the hope of purchasing a portion of it. And Joe has worked out a deal to purchase a portion of it, but it did not include where this original stub road was shown. Jerry needed to keep a certain acreage for his agricultural tax benefits, is my understanding of why he chose where his line would be. So we have revised the road location based off of being able to connect into that parcel that he will buy in the future. He currently doesn't have any plans, but it's one of those. It's a good opportunity and good property to own adjacent to his current project, so worked out a deal for that. So that's really the only change. There was a minor relocation of a manhole based off of field condition, so that is shown on the sewer easement, but a very minor change, like I said.
A slight change to the radius of the bend, it looks like, too, as well, right?
Oh, compared to...
Yes, yes.
Yeah. It's the same number of lots. And then we also got the street name for Shagmark Drive. That was from County 911.
My understanding is part of that placement is driven by the fact that there's wetlands that would have been?
Well, there's a stream that comes through Jerry's that goes to that corner, yes.
Any questions, gentlemen?
In the letter, unless I'm referring to the wrong reference, in the letter from the engineer, was there not mention of a parcel that was going to be landlocked?
That's the subdivision.
Previous application.
That's a different...
That was the previous application that they tabled.
Okay.
All right, so because this is not finalized yet, this street doesn't exist, so it would have created a landlocked parcel, which is part of the reason for tabling that application at this time.
I had a note somewhere about needing a final traffic report. Has that...
They provided one. They provided one before we approved the revised preliminary plat for the section.
Right. Any questions, Doug?
Nope.
I'll read our findings. A separate environmental impact study is not required since this action is part of the Timberbanks plant unit development and is consistent with the CHA review included in the Timbers Land Use Plan. There is a letter on file from Jason Hoy, engineer for the town, per an intermunicipal agreement that has been made part of the public record, but I don't have a copy of that. Now, that's the one for, that's Al's letter for...
Oh, no, wait a minute. It was sent up with those files?
I read it. I read it on the phone when it was sent, but I didn't bring it down.
It should have been right on top of the maps when I sent them.
Right here?
I can go print another one.
Unless I somehow...
Yeah, print one off quick.
Oh, don't tell me.
Good catch.
What's this? Okay, that's just... I found it.
The Van Buren.
Yeah. I got it, Al. When Karen says she does something, she does it. I just looked in the wrong place. Dear Planning Board members, the Town of Lysander requested Van Buren's assistance in reviewing the design documents for Timberbanks Phase 4, Section 10, due to CHA Solutions being the project designer, as well as the Lysanders designated engineer. To date, we have received construction drawings dated July 18, 2024, stormwater pollution prevention plan dated May 2024. It is our understanding that the planning board is again considering the subdivision of Phase 4, Section 10, based on a modification to the plans. This modification consists of an addition of a stub road, road off of Shagmark Drive. The addition of this stub road allows access to the parcel to the west. While the stub road location is not exactly shown in the GPP, the pub zoning allows for flexibility for the town and developer to make changes through the course of the project. There are no engineering concerns with the lot layout nor the road alignments as shown on his final subdivision plat. The plat may be approved. A full review of drawings and SWP was completed, and a recommendation for approval was submitted to the Town Board in December of 2024. Sincerely, Jason Hoy, Town of Vampir.
I have a question that I tried to get answered back in last September, and I don't want to hold it up for this, but I don't want to see it happen again. When Jason Hoy reviews something, we need to have some questions answered. Doesn't mean he's got to be here, but I have asked in the minutes. Why can we not get a question answered to the effect that something we approved 18 years ago, none of us were on the board at that time, is now consistent with this plan? We still have not had an answer on that. It was in the minutes. I've sent Karen a couple of notes on it.
I think it says that.
Where?
This modification consists of addition of a stub road, be off Shagmark Drive. The addition of the stub road will allow access to the parcel to the west. While the stub road is not exactly as shown in the GPP, the PUD zoning allows for flexibility for the town and developer to make changes through the course of the project.
Meaning that's the only change?
That's the change, is the...
But I don't hear him say that there are no other changes. I mean, we're looking at something that was approved 18 years ago. There have been a lot of changes. One of the changes has been the addition of a Y.
Well, the Y change was approved in 2014, though.
I know that, but he's not talking about any of that.
I'm sure if you guys have questions, I know Jason would pick up, if you called, Jason will pick up the phone, and I'm sure he'll answer them, or if you want to shoot him an email, I'm sure Jason will answer.
No, I'm going along because I don't want to hold it up, and that probably is fine. But it just seems that would have been a question if you had been the town engineer that I would have asked, and I would have had very great confidence in your answer. I still do, but obviously, I can't ask you.
I understand, and I think Jason is alluding to substantially the same, but they made a revision to where the paper street is going to be located, is what he's alluding to.
I'll go along because I'm not going to hold it up.
Well, but I'll make a comment that I think is appropriate based on what you said, is that this is an extremely large development. It is a PUD, and they are allowed to make changes over time. Any one of those changes are difficult to see whether or not they have much of an impact on the adjacent community, on River Road, other things. Cumulatively, they might, so I think it might be in the best interest of our review process. I don't know who would do this if we have the resources to do it, but it'd be nice to look at all of the changes that occur in Timberbanks, so that as another change occurs, we're able to put that on the list and make a determination. Independently, this modification may not have much of an impact, but cumulatively, along with all of the other changes that have taken place over the course of the last 20 years or so, I don't know how old Timberbanks is, but roughly that, maybe it has an impact, and we're not seeing that impact because we're only seeing these individual changes that occur over time. Now, I don't know, again, this was approved without any of us ever seeing it because we weren't on the board back then. So as these changes come up, it's difficult for us to determine whether or not the changes have the impact that we think would be significant. I'm not saying that this change in the location of the stub road is itself of impact or, in consideration with all the other modifications, would result in an impact. But there are some things that could be, something that seems minor on its own, but in conjunction with all the other modifications that have taken place, it could be. So I think as a board, we may consider whether or not we somehow get reminded of all the changes in the past so that we can make what are good understandings of whether or not a single impact that's in front of, or change that's in front of us today has an impact on the project's influence on the community.
If Al were the town engineer on this, I would have asked him that question. I would have gotten the answer, and I wouldn't have said anything more. But Al's not the town engineer on this.
I understand where you guys are coming from, and I think Steve makes a valid point in some ways. I think the other thing that really the board should discuss is this change doesn't increase density, right? I mean, we're moving a road. We didn't change a number of lots. It's not increasing density. It doesn't change...
Doesn't increase traffic.
It doesn't increase traffic because it's still not exceeding the number of lots that are allowed in the subdivision. From a drainage standpoint, it really doesn't change anything. And from a utility standpoint, it doesn't either, because you're still talking the same number of homes. And from a fire flow and pressure standpoint for water, it's really not making a difference. And from a sanitary sewer system design, it's not necessarily making a difference. You know, I can see how density changes the board would certainly be concerned with if you were going from what was originally single-family lots to multifamily or townhouse-style, rowhouse-style lots. But that's not the case in this instance. That was always, you know, this part of Timberbanks was always lower, the lower-density, single-family lots. So that's not a huge change as far as what he's doing. So, I mean, I guess I do agree with Steve in that there are times when cumulative changes can make a difference. However, in this instance, it's, the changes, generally speaking, the change is benign. And also, the other thing I think is worth noting is, you know, we went through the Radisson subdivision or the Radisson project over the past 50, whatever, four years or five years now, and the changes have been, we could count. You know, from what that was, the original GPP showed that development being, that's the intention of PUD zoning, is to allow flexibility for the developer as market conditions change, as, you know, environmental regulations change, all these things are considered. And really, the first line of the PUD zoning code specifically states that the purpose of PUD zoning is to allow flexibilities for developers to adjust the plan as market demands change. It's literally the first line of the code. So it is, to some degree, it is a right of the developer to make minor changes and modifications, and the town's Town Planning Board approval is really a cursory review to those changes of, hey, is he adding units? Is he adding density? Is he adding additional curb cuts? Things like that that you would want to review and look at. And in this instance, the change is benign. You know, that's the only thing that I think the board should consider, and that is really the code specifically states that PUD zoning, which is granted by the Town Board, allows flexibility for the developer throughout the development process.
Yeah, I'm not arguing any of that, and I appreciate all your answers, Al, because you make me comfortable. But going forward, can you maybe remind Jason, if he's looking at something that's been going on over time? We just need that answer in the letter, that it is, whatever is being presented is consistent with whatever we approved whenever it was. That's all.
I can certainly ask him to do that in his letters moving forward at Timberbanks.
Okay, thank you.
And I know there was a meeting where he had, Jason had provided information to us, and he was not available for the meeting, and I thought we stated in that meeting that in future meetings where he provides guidance to this board, he would be at the meetings. Didn't we not state that? Did we not state that?
We did, you did, you did. And with that being said, Jason's golf league conflicts, and I don't know if he's willing to miss his golf league.
It's impossible for him to meet up there.
I don't have a problem if he doesn't care. All he's got to do is put in one sentence and just say that it's consistent with whatever we approved before. That's all.
That's fair enough. I can certainly relay that comment to him.
He just works the letter differently than you.
What's that?
He said it. He works his letters differently.
He does. Jason and I have a bit of a different writing style. Not that anything's wrong with the way Jason writes, or that anything's wrong with the way I write. Quite frankly, I kind of like the way Jason writes. He probably writes a little better than me, honestly. So, you know, I... it's a little bit of a different style, that's all.
Let the record reflect that I've golfed with him, and he would be better off here.
I want to know you said that.
I'd like that to be in the minutes.
Let's move on.
Make the following resolution. Resolve that the planning board authorizes the chairperson to review the final plat for the 44 lot subdivision application, Jason. Timber for property located at Timberbank Section 10, Phase 4, Forest Ridge Lane, Walden ville, New York, part of farm lot number 82 and part of tax map number 072-01-08.4, as shown on a map dated July 18, 2024. Last revision date of May 15, 2025, prepared by Anusian Romans License Land Surveyor, and finding that all modifications and conditions have been met, that the final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, and that any differences found are not significant. The board authorizes the chairperson to waive the final plat public hearing and sign the final plat with the following conditions pending. I'm not aware that there would be conditions on this one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discuss. Well, I think we have enough of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. The law states that the applicant shall file the final plat in Anadaga County Clerk's office within 62 days from the date of the final approval, or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat in the Lysander Clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, I did go over to your office and pulled the preliminary plat that was approved. I took a picture of it on my phone. That does nobody any good, but maybe even if we were provided with that course of preliminary plat, because it did show.
Yeah, yeah, it's essentially the same loop. It's just a different paper street location.
Al, I have a question. Maybe I'm wrong. That I've... Members of this board have been involved with modifications to Timberbanks over the years. And at those hearings, a lot of things, it would... I thought it was made clear that none of those changes in any way materially changed what was approved 18 years ago. In fact, we're still under the number of units, I believe.
Yeah, we're still under the maximum number of units.
The traffic study was based on total build outs.
Correct. And the Y is the only substantial change to the GPP, that additional use of community recreation that was added in 2014 GPP Amendment Number 5 or something.
Now, that's the only thing that could have possibly had a major impact on traffic in that it's been done.
I think the relocation of the apartments from the rear of the properties to the front also...
Yeah, I didn't think about that one. That was like 2016.
It's probably not a traffic issue, but it's a pretty big modification from what was presented previously. So I... that's what I'm talking about.
They're allowed to do that, though.
Well, yeah, they are. But when you look at one thing independently, it doesn't seem like much, but when you look at the addition of a YMCA that brings, I don't know how many thousand vehicles in every day, the relocation of the apartments, the changes of some road structures, at some point, you might look at what seems like a minor modification and say, you know what? In conjunction with everything that's changed, this does have an impact on the community. That's all I'm saying, is that it's difficult to keep all those things in your mind as to what happened. Here we are discussing about a major change. The apartment's being changed from the rear to the front, and we've even forgotten about that. So my thought is that if we had a list of all the changes, as we see new changes take place as a board, we would be in a better position to consider whether or not as a compilation of changes, there's a greater impact or some negative element to it as opposed to just looking at the single thing in front of us.
Well, there's certainly going to be situations where that's appropriate, for sure. But we...
Like if they came in with the next section and they wanted to go to townhouse lots, per se. Yeah, you know what? I can see your point there, Steve. That makes a very valid point.
I'll tell you another one. CHA at one point came here and they talked about wanting to modify it because the density was not changing, and because they were putting the same number of lots in. But they were putting the same number of lots in a smaller area. I'm sorry, but the definition of density is, you know, lots per area. And that was cut down. That wasn't approved. I don't know how many years ago that was, but the idea that they lost the property for the YMCA, and they wanted to then take the houses that would have been developed in that parcel and move that into another piece of the property. Now, they were claiming it wasn't an increase in density because they were calling the density the entire development, the entire site, whereas the density in my definition would have been that area in which they were putting all of these houses. So there's something that if that came in front of us, just simply by itself, in the future, you could forget the aspect that the houses that were displaced are those where the YMCA now sits. And that YMCA has a significant impact in traffic, view shed, and everything else. So therefore, you think initially, well, if they're putting the same number of houses into the development that they originally planned 25 years ago, why not do it? But if you take it in conjunction with the fact that those houses that they wanted to put in that are now being put over here were supposed to be where there's a YMCA now, which has an impact on the parcel, then you understand that it's not that great an idea and that it does have an impact. So that's an example of why I think we can't forget the modifications that have taken place over time, and that we want to... and it's difficult to forget these things, so if we just had a list of it, it might be worthwhile, or if we just want to rely on our memory. I don't have a problem with that either. It's just that we need to remember that our job is to look at it as a comprehensive element, not as a single, not as a single modification.
I think we know what our job is. Thank you. Next item. Oh, good. Recommendations to the Town Board Code Changes. Has everyone looked at those?
Yeah.
Or understand them? I guess, as Karen has presented this, I think it's a good way to look at it. We can either look at it and say, we approve the recommendations as submitted, or we approve the recommendations with the following modifications and/or considerations. What... since I was actively involved with preparation of some of this, and Al certainly was involved with it, and there's been meetings since I have not been involved, which I think with Kevin, you guys have added some stuff that wasn't in what we approved. Your thoughts?
I don't have much to say on that.
If we require streetlights at all intersections, if the development is not having streetlights, what's the impact regarding them as far as a district?
So currently, we require that, you know, when a new subdivision comes in, they form all the special districts at the time of subdivision approval of the contract drawing for the subdivision. So that's an action of the Town Board, it's a local law action. Moving forward, the Town Board has indicated that subdivisions are going to include a lighting district, and the lighting district will have streetlights that will be provided by the developer at the intersections. There's also opportunities for additional streetlights to be added if there's a specific concern. I just had a resident grab me in Timberbanks today when I was over there looking at a drainage problem, saying, hey, where the golf cart pass crosses Forest Ridge Crossing, when you're doing the streetlights, it would be nice to have a streetlight there because people walk that trail, especially in the wintertime, after dark. It's a very valid point. That is a location where having an additional streetlight, even though there's not a street intersection, makes sense. And I think those things need to be considered when we're reviewing a construction drawings or preliminary plat for a subdivision, site plan, whatever you want to call it, that should be considered by the board. And there's certainly opportunity to add streetlights, but at a bare minimum, we think that the intersection should be lit.
So any subdivision that's formed has a lighting district to it?
And any major subdivision going forward, we're going to require a lighting, along with the water district, sewer district, and drainage district. Just do the lighting district. Because, as Doug and I were talking about when this meeting started and that, sidewalks and lights are very controversial when you try to do a district after the fact. Nine times out of 10, even though they may be, a great example is Highland Meadows. Highland Meadows should have streetlights. Unfortunately, we didn't require the developer to inform a lighting district when the district was formed, when the Town Board sent out a mailer about a lighting district being informed and what the debt service was going to be. The residents voted it down. They didn't want to pay the tax. But really, that's a perfect example of a subdivision, that's a major subdivision, that should have streetlights. At some point in time, the Town Board really needs to step in and say, yeah, this isn't a desirable situation to allow the homeowners to vote something down that affects public safety ultimately, that, you know, maybe they shouldn't have a say in because it affects their taxes. Does that make sense to everybody?
The way it's written, because I can't remember, does it require, would that require the developer to provide the streetlights as sections are developed?
Correct, correct.
Like, my instance, we paid into a lighting district, we'd have lights for eight years.
Yep.
Wonder what we're paying for.
Yeah.
But, yeah, no, I think that's great, actually. And I have no other comments to the...
Yeah, the other thing that we added since Jack really came to this end is a requirement that we're actually going to codify the driveway slope requirement so that we don't have another one, Highland Meadows. You know, we've got some driveways with slopes that are approaching 15%, and we've had instances where people have parked their cars in the driveway in the wintertime and come out in the morning and they park cars in the road because, you know, freezing rain, it slid down the driveway. So we're requiring either driveways to be less than 10% slope, or have a landing area in front of the garage that's at least 20 feet long that is less than 4% slope to park a car on so it's not, you know, sliding back into the road in the icy conditions of winter. Which I fully expect when they do the public hearing for this, we'll have every developer in town come up and speak about, but it's just a common sense safety thing for residents and everybody else.
I was kind of looking at you, since you had more involvement than anyone. Is there anything in there that has changed from what was in the land use plan? And are you content with the changes?
I'm content with them. I guess the more I thought about it, we made an original proposal. We tried to focus in on solar farms, the siting and stuff like that. there's a area, a fine line between trying to do something that makes sense for the people of Lysander and the town and trying to stop something through code. And I think we got more room to look at maybe a little further setbacks. We suggested, I think, a $500, it was $500 an acre fee for siting.
For solar farms.
Yeah, sort of like fees in lieu of. The more I thought about that, I don't, that number's way too low. I mean, I personally would put on here to increase that number. I don't know what the right one is. Is it 1,000? Is it 2,000? 5,000? I don't know, but I would leave it up to the board to pick that number because they ultimately will, no matter what we suggest. But that would be one suggestion I would make. Now, what we did with the setbacks, as you saw, the way the code currently reads, under certain conditions, without screening, you know, go back to 200 feet. Well, what we did was we said the minimum setback will be 200 feet, and at the board's option, depending on the environment, it can be moved back further. I'm still comfortable with that. Because I think in most cases, we've come a long way with getting the kind of screening we're looking for now because we understand it a little bit better. So in general, I'm... I would vote to approve recommendations with the following modifications and/or considerations, and one I would list would be the fee for the thumb. Other than that, I'm comfortable with what's been proposed. I've been in the discussions and listened, and even though I didn't participate in the second part that Al's talking about, which really focuses more on town law codes, and I was on the part that was focused on the land use plan stuff that hits us, so.
Do we have any idea for outline or anything, what we want for a life cycle analysis for roads?
Yeah, we've put together a template that we use, and it's actually, we've had it now in place since 2016.
We've used that.
Okay, good.
And it's actually proven out because I've been tracking cost. I've been tracking cost. It looks like it's going to prove out pretty well. I mean, nobody can read into the future. If oil spikes and oil goes to $200 a barrel and asphalt goes to $200 a ton, well, we might need to revisit it. But as of right now, you know, with the assumptions we've made on inflation and everything else, it still seems to be tracking like we got it right.
Good that you have a template, because as I say, if you didn't, you're going to get a report that looks different from every developer. You wouldn't be able to interpret.
Yeah, we made an Excel template that we will provide to the developers that they can plug in the number of units, the lot width and road frontage, and it's, it works pretty good. Honestly, it's definitely proved out in Whispering Oaks. That was the first one we used it on, and it's the Cabbage Patch Extension. It's proved out pretty well. It's proved out pretty well when you start looking at what the costs are, what the revenue generated is. I mean, that may be helped by the recent inflation and home appreciation.
Well, it's something that we allow ourselves to update periodically.
Yeah, we start seeing property value.
See if it's tracking and see if it needs to be.
If we start seeing property value decrease, well, then we need to look at that model again.
But that core model, the framework of it, seems to be the right direction.
Yeah, it seems like it works. Yeah, it seems like it works.
Well, if, if nobody else has a modification or consideration to list, I would say that I'm going to suggest that the board would approve, asking the town board to consider raising that fees in lieu of per acre fee. And I'm comfortable with the rest of it as it stands now. So.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Well, okay. Do I have to, is that a good enough resolution?
Perfect.
Okay.
You just need a second.
I'll give you, I'll give you some better words.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. We'll add that.
I ran over you.
I've been run over by this board so many times, it doesn't matter anymore. That concludes our agenda. I want to thank you all and make a motion that the meeting be adjourned. Can't see the clock, but I think it's around.
7:52.
7:52.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you, gentlemen.